Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Eastman's been in gravel.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion on that motion? If not all in favor of Bill sending a letter on behalf of the Select Board, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. I will make a note and when Bill returns, I will talk to him to draft a letter. Danny, anything else?
Nope.
Danny, I have a question.
Yeah, right.
I saw you and I don't know if it was Mike at Trey Hands a couple of weeks ago. Was there a problem there?
That was actually Todd Manise, which is the head of the River Coordinators.
Oh.
When that was all done, I guess one of the permits wasn't done properly. So he had to do a follow-up.
Okay. Is that okay Kathy?
Yeah, I was just curious why they were there, why you were there.
We have the excess wage permit for United Natural Foods. We need a motion to have Bill current sign that excess wage permit. So I'm going to make a motion to approve our move. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And Danny, you have nothing else, right?
Um, nope. I probably will stick around for the budget review if there's any questions on that.
Okay. All righty. You're welcome to be here.
Oh, and I didn't know if you wanted me around for any of the policies you got on there either.
Uh, you're certainly welcome. Um, you might want to comment on the tree policy. Have you seen the copies that Bill sent you though?
Yeah, I saw them with Bill. I'll stick around for a bit more.
Okay, all right. Okay, anything else Danny before we move on to Kim? Miss you Danny, don't see you anymore.
I meet you guys on the road.
All right, Kim, you're on.
Are you going to do Rich first?
Oh, that's right, Rich. Is Rich on?
He should be.
Rich?
Where'd he go? He was on.
He's gone, he's gone now.
Ha! Yeah, he was on here.
Yep. It's left.
All right, well, maybe he'll come back.
Okay, Kim, I see a note on my computer here. Recording has started. The media is being recorded. So they must be Fact TV used to be on?
Fact TV is on and then I just remembered I'm supposed to be recording myself too.
Okay.
So I restarted recording, um, just when you guys started talking about the gravel.
Okay, well, I guess we'll just, if Rich returns, we can deal with him, but...
And we've got Wendy who does awesome minutes. So whatever we, Fact TV missed or the recording, we got her.
All right. All right, Kim, you're on. Budget review.
Um, I just sent out to you the revenue, the expenditure and also the budget, um, ballot sheet this morning. Um, I couldn't get it to you any earlier because we just ended the month end and I wanted to get the last, um, AP payroll that Michelle just did on Sunday in on this along with putting an interest on. I think we're in okay shape. Again, I talked about it during our Board of Abatement. If you looked at the revenue, we have collected 96.77% of our overall taxes for 2019-20. So that's pretty good. I don't think we fall in one of the towns that are going to have difficulties making payments. And school payment has been made even after your budget sheet you just got. So if you have any questions during the week after looking these over closer because you didn't have much time, just let me know. Um, I... Go ahead.
Uh, Kim, I got a question on the craft and fire and the graft and rescue and humanitarian articles. How come we spent more than was budgeted?
Right now what that is, is it's a, um, an in, in and out. And so when they use fuel, um, we ended up, we invoice them. So it comes from their account and then they reimburse us back. So that's why it shows a fluctuation there. Humanitarians is probably under because it's on my desk right now before the end of the fiscal year. Bill and I usually get together, but I'll do it tomorrow. Um, anybody who's not requested their humanitarians, we usually send them a reminder so we can get that to the $9,654, I think it is, that we, um, vote on at town meeting. And that brings me to asking, um, John and I believe Kathy, my note says. Um, you guys need to, um, request, you want me to put in a request? Yes, John and Kathy for your stipend for Select Board.
For this year.
For this year.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. John?
Yep.
Okay. Um, and just so you know that, um, Chris Wallace, um, took over for Josh's, Josh's position. So Josh got half of the stipend which he had taken and Chris has sent me a letter today and he's requesting that his portion of the stipend, that I move it into the Town Hall Handicap Reserve account. So he's, um, wants to donate it back to the town. So we're not even going to cut him a check. Um, budget. I did, um, attend a webinar. We are all ramping up for that good old education tax rate that's going to be late. All towns are. So they're prepping us all to be ready for it. Um, they highly suggest or they don't recommend, but they highly suggest the best form is to just delay the first quarter of taxes to September and keep the November and so on the remainder installments. Um, so that's probably the route we're going to go. I've got a little bit more time to, um, talk and make the motion that you guys do this. I think probably the next Select Board meeting. Um, but it's inevitable. It's going to happen. Um, that's it. You guys have any questions about the budget? The only one thing that they did bring up in the webinar that, um, just be mindful that if we are just going to slide our, our first installment to the next month, have conversation with the school to let the school know that once we collect the taxes, if we set a date, the town has 20 days before we officially have to by law give them their portion of the money towards the tax rate and towards the school. Um, so that means the school is not only a month out, they're a month and 20 days before we're required to give them their, their portion of the quarter taxes. Um, and I, I do think they're aware of that. They did have to borrow last year and they might have to do that this year. That's totally up to them. Um, but they did mention, they did mention about probably, um, needing to be mindful of spending, um, any equipment you're going to buy, any large construction projects, any paving, um, anything that can be not scheduled within the four to six months of your, beginning of your fiscal year. So that's it.
Um, on the repairs and maintenance of the equipment, we should be thinking about talking to the capital budget of changing the life of the trucks from seven years to five years. You look at how much you've spent for repairs.
I agree, John, and I think that's something that we should, we should put, make a note. So when the capital budget meets in the fall, uh, we can, we can give them their, we have to send them a request anyway.
Right.
Okay, I'm all set.
Election school, do you want to deal with that?
Oh, on the next one too. Yeah. Um, yes, we just had, um, the BCA meeting, which I think all of the Select Board members are aware of. Um, but those who don't, um, our election is for the school. WNEUSD, um, will be June 25th to vote on a budget. It will be held at the fire station. Normal polling hours, nine to seven. There will be restrictions. Um, and we're certainly going to allow everyone to vote and we make accommodations, but it will be restricted as to social distancing, on how many people we're going to allow to vote at one given time, things like that. So, um, it will happen June 25th. I think it'll be very smooth. We still will honor absentees. We will honor, uh, shut-ins. Um, anybody that needs a ballot delivered to them, we're still going to abide by that. Um, everything's been posted. I think it's going to go pretty good. The school board has already agreed that they will produce the ballots. They will incur all costs for this election because it is, um, it, it's not the town's, it's, it's not the town's problem that we've had. So it is all under the school. Any questions?
Uh, Kim, can, I'd like to back up the budget one more time. I have another, I have another question. Uh, under the contracted services, $105,000 for paving, you're probably not going to use it within this year. So what happens to it?
It moves to the reserve that we made. So if you look on your balance sheet...
Yep, okay.
Yep. And I, I don't move that immediately. That gets moved by our professional audits from Sullivan Power. So whenever they come, usually it's not until almost the end of summer or the beginning of fall. And they like to actually move those monies themselves and not me.
Okay.
Any other, any other questions or discussion on the school election? If not, delinquent tax collector policy. Have you all received a copy of it?
Oh, I got that.
Um, I can pull it up.
After I believe that Bill had circulated before he left.
Would you like me to pull it up on the screen?
I have mine.
Tree, delinquent. Okay, here we go.
Four or five pages.
Can you guys see this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have any, has everybody had any, many comments? Uh, Kim, do you have anything you'd like to say about it or Michelle, if she's still here?
Um, I think Michelle is still on. Michelle?
I'm still on. I just had a question. I know that you did the 8% and though, and added the interest this year. Is it your job to do that before you hand it over to me? Because in the policy, it says I'm supposed to do that and I'm not really sure if it's just because it was this year that you did it or...
Right. Um, typically the ways, um, some of the manuals read, it's, um, it is up to the current tax collector and then that's why I need to give you that warrant.
Okay. I'm fine with that, but you'll have to fix it in the, on page two.
Well, moving forward though, if we were to adopt it, then it's going to be you doing it.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
I'm totally fine with you doing it, but if I'm supposed to, then I will do it.
Okay, um, well, it's, it's up to you, whatever you'd like to do. So we can... Do you mind posting the 8%?
I just figured if you're going to hand it over to me, you might as well do it at the same time, but it's really up to you.
Okay, well, I, I don't mind doing it. So we can change that back so that I'll do it prior to sending you the warrant. So where was that that you said you saw that?
It's on page two, under delinquent tax penalty. It's right on your screen.
Okay, the collector of delinquent taxes is responsible for posting this penalty on the delinquent account. Okay. So you want to change that to the current tax collector is responsible. Is that right?
It's fine with me.
Okay. All right, I'll make note of it so that Bill will and then that's a change in, in the policy if we adopt it tonight. Anything else, Michelle?
I don't think so.
Kim, do you have any, any, I know you and Bill worked on it, but...
Um, it was Michelle and Bill and, um, the town attorney, um, worked on this quite a bit. Um, we had multiple versions and this is the one we came up with. And it's, um, pretty straightforward. Um, it's giving them almost two years. So, um, this one being counted as one and then as soon as the next tax year comes due, next May, then that would be considered their second year and that makes them eligible for a tax sale. Um, and at that time, um, it gets handed over to the attorney and that the attorney, they do have 30 days from the time we turn it to the attorney before it officially legally is going to be advertised and, um, go forward. So, but it does then become the attorney's property. And like I said, this is a perfect time for us. We have very, very few delinquencies or we did have few delinquencies. This is just the beginning and it'll, I'm sure it'll, it'll get much smaller before, um, we move into the next couple of months. Larry Slay's in our town attorney, says we're in really good shape for delinquencies. Um, and one has been cleared up that we were concerned about and the second one cannot be cleared up until two estates sell a property. And once the two estates sell this one property, um, we're of course top, top on the list for getting paid. But that will not go into a tax sale because it is an estate. But yeah, we're happy with this. It took a long time to get this far. I've been wanting to see something like this for quite some time, but it, it's a huge change for the taxpayers, I think, to see all this legal stuff. But, um, it's definitely needed, especially nowadays.
You need a motion to adopt?
Yes, we do, if you guys...
Yeah, but before you adopt it, Kim?
Mm-hmm.
Section three, um, the term of the office is three years. That was batted around at a town meeting and, uh, so is everybody still happy with the three-year thing?
Well, that's how it stands right now. So you can't change it, but once you change it at the next town meeting, then we would come back and amend the policy.
Okay, all right, okay. Yeah, John, if everybody approves it, yes, we need a motion to accept it with the change that was made about the town clerk turning and doing the 8%.
Well, I'll make that motion.
Can you give a second? Somebody go to second?
I did second.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Do we have any other discussion on the delinquent tax collection policy?
The only discussion I have is I, I just, I, that somehow slipped through my radar. I haven't had a chance to, to go through it, but as far as I'm concerned, if Kim and Bill and the town attorney is, is, I'm good with it.
Okay. Well, I, I did talk to Bill about it and I know that Bill and Kim worked very hard on it, I think with Michelle and the attorney. So, uh, they were, everybody was satisfied that it was okay. So, that's how I looked at it. So all, uh, all in favor of adopting the grafted delinquent tax collection policy? Say aye.
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 Okay, so Bill is not here. So, um, Kim, you'll, you'll tell Bill about the change, right?
Yes, yes. And he'll regen the minute.
He'll, he'll make the copies and then it'll be available for signature at the town hall. Yes, when one industry returns.
Yeah.
All right, so that's approved. Okay. That's a good thing for the town, personally, I think.
Yeah.
Do we have anything on the, the virus? Does anybody know when we can go have select board meetings face-to-face again?
You'll probably find out more at Wednesday's meeting when you go join that webinar.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Is anybody else going to join that? I'm, I'm planning to join the webinar on Wednesday between two and three on the open meeting law. I don't know if everybody knows about it, but Kim sent out a note, I think it was, and she can't make it because she's not there on Wednesday, but I plan to do it. And I would encourage anybody else who wants to.
Yeah, I'll join you, Joe.
Okay, well, you, I think you have the email from, um...
Yes, yeah, I have.
Yeah, so you just do it. So I encourage anybody to do it, the more the merrier.
But didn't Governor relax group assemblies from 10 to 25?
Yeah, he did. But the problem now is, is that, and I talked to Bill about this before he left, is that we could, we could have the meeting up above the town hall and we could spread out. The question is if, if more than 25 people attend, in other words, there's six selected people or five and one, and then we have 30 people from the, what do you do? And that's, that's the question that nobody could answer because you're going to turn somebody away. Um, and I don't know how you have to sterilize or face masks. And maybe they'll answer all this at this webinar thing, I don't know.
Well, then you have to deal with tracing because everybody would need to sign in so that you have some sort of a tracing process in, in place. So it just makes it difficult.
I'm there anyway.
Pardon?
I said that's, you know, you know who attends anyway. That's in the, that's in the, in the minutes. So that's easy. But the question is what do you do if more than 25 people show up?
Being public, you have to be prepared.
I guess. Anyway, so let's see what the webinar says and then we can, I guess, make a decision at the next meeting depending on what happens.
It would seem like even if we agreed to relax and go back to men, uh, regular meetings, we would need a bigger facility. Town garage isn't going to work.
No, the town hall will.
Is town hall large enough and, and does it meet handicap accessible?
Well, that's the only issue. It doesn't meet handicap, but it is, I think, I think it would be big enough.
So I could see us perhaps having to go to the school.
Can't use the school.
We can't use the school?
Mm-mm.
I don't think so.
Nope.
Because of, uh, the virus?
Yep, the lockdown, yep.
Okay, all right.
Anyway, we can deal with that, I guess, at the next meeting. If not, sooner.
Well, if we don't have a facility that will house it, makes it easy. We keep doing what we're doing.
Yeah, I know.
Not that we like it, but...
I guess right now, choice.
I do, I can mute it whenever I want.
I just like being a person and seeing by, by fellow Select Board people and having chats rather than sitting in front of some computer. But that's just me. All right, cemetery policy, does everybody have a copy of that?
Yep.
Yep.
Stan and I worked on that and, um, I was looking at it and Stan, um, there was, um, there was something that was not added on here. Remember we decided that all cemeteries should have a plaque of their, or their, when it was, when they were started and any historical facts and any new cemetery would be the same way. You remember that?
Yeah, but is that, is that a policy thing or is that just going to be something that will happen through a Select Board decision?
No, it would have to go onto a policy because that, so they, any new cemetery would, would have to follow that regulation, I think.
No, you're right. We did not put that on there.
That's the only thing that I didn't see that we, that you and I had talked about, but obviously we need the board's input here to see how, if they all agree with this.
The only, the only other change that I saw, it just states things twice, like under deeds on the first page, it goes into the, how many cremation urns you can have, but then in the back, it does stipulate it better. Uh, so that's kind of listed twice. I would just take it out of that, just remove that sentence out of deed.
Where are you reading that?
Under deeds on the first page.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Where it goes in is one casket and a vault and two cremations or a sealed container, in a sealed container.
Right, right.
We changed that, remember, to not exceed three on, on, um, uses in construction standards. Now, I think it's F on the second page. All lots shall be limited to allow one full burial and two burial, uh, two urn burials per single grave or three urn burials per single grave.
Right.
And then the thing on the front deeds, it sort of says it differently. That should have been changed or removed.
Well, why don't, why don't we just either remove it or change it so that it's consistent?
Yeah.
I'll make a note and, uh, we can have Bill redo this thing.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
But it just, it just should read the same.
Yeah.
On, on both sides, both places, that's all.
Is there any other comments on some of the other details?
Yeah, I, uh, under cemetery rates to purchase, it's non-resident. Remember we were going to take half of that and put it in for perpetual care? There is 150 for the lot and then 175 for perpetual care. I, I couldn't add that up to 300.
Oh, I think that's, I think that must be a typo.
Yeah. It should be 150 and 150.
Yeah. I'll, I'll make that change too. Does anybody else have any other thoughts?
So does this mean you guys will accept it with those changes?
What, I, I just, I'll make one more comment. I'd like to accept it. I, I don't know if you want to call it provisionally, but I don't know that the caretaker or the cemetery crew, uh, do they have any input on this? I know you and Walter and Bill did the initial workup on it. And they have, far as I know, they have not had the opportunity to look at this.
Oh, Wal, Walter has.
The new one?
Yeah.
Okay. And what, what was his thoughts?
Uh, he's fine with everything. In fact, he's the one that helped us come up with the wording for, um, when to remove items that should not be there, what type of containers.
On, on the updated version, on the...
Yeah.
The one that Joe and I did?
Yeah, but...
I don't know about the one you and Joe did.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying that maybe should they look at it first? We could accept it provisionally, I guess. Or should we just accept it and then they have to go by it?
But Stan, I, I think there's something missing here. Remember we talked about the plantings are not allowed and they have to be removed prior to November 1st?
Yes.
And we said if it wasn't, we were going to charge, wasn't the charge of $50?
Yeah, but there was, we had discussed that and, um, according to Bill, and I have to agree, there is no enforcement for that.
Oh.
We, we can't, I mean, there's no way of enforcing that.
Well, then you might better just, you might better just understand that the cemetery workers are going to go around every fall and, and put all this stuff and then we're going to go to the dump and dump this plastic someplace and pay recycling fees. Because that's, that's what's going to happen.
Under K is where we're asking them to please be, remove everything by November 1st and then April 15th. Um, I'm, we're hoping to make sure that every time I sell a lot, they are going to sign off and get a copy of this and as long as we advertise it far enough in advance. But this, this was recommended and okayed with Walter also.
Right, but Stan and I talked about it, that ultimately the cost is going to be, the town is going to bear the cost. Because Walter, who's going to drive his own truck, is going to take the plastic, plastic pots and everything else some, to some recycling center. And there's a cost.
Well, we can have it picked up at, from Rogerio's like we, like I do my recycling up to the town sheds. Um, we pay them on some.
But then that's a cost.
In the past, Don has brought it all to the town garage.
He's, yeah, so, okay. What was that Danny?
In the past, Don has already brought, has always brought that stuff up to the town garage and it went in our rubbish.
And that's okay with you guys to...
That's how it's always been done. He's always brought it in bags to us and we just throw it in with our stuff every Monday when they come.
Okay.
Okay.
So there's not, so they're not allowed to do any perennial planting around the grave?
That is correct.
Because what's happened is they plant either a small tree or, or something like that and then the roots get underneath there and starts moving the stone.
And, and they start overcasting and shadowing all others and they just, they're just like growing huge.
I was just thinking when people plant, you know, grape hyacinths or tulips, you know?
Well, they can do that, but they do it in pots. Well, they can do that, but they do it in pots.
Just pot, yeah, and they're.
Right, you can do it, but it's in a pot, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if you walk through some of these cemeteries and see what's been planted up over the years, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's pretty tough to work around.
And, and then most, most of the policies that Stan and I looked at, um, all, all the cemeteries prohibit any actual planting of anything that's gonna grow there forever. So what's the, what's everybody's feeling about this, that we wanna approve this with the changes or, or had, or, or prior to having Walter or somebody sign off on these things?
I, I.
I may mostly approve it as.
I think if Walter's had the opportunity to redo this thing and he thinks it's fine, I think we oughta move ahead and.
Okay. Alan, so your, your motion says?
I made a motion, we approve the policy as written with, uh, minor changes.
We have Alan motion and Stan second, if we have no further discussions, all in favor of approving the cemetery policy, say aye.
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 Both? Okay? Okay, tree policy. It's somewhere here. Okay. Has anybody looked at the tree policy, this is more complicated.
Yeah.
Yep.
Go down, go down, no, go down.
Now, if we, if we all haven't looked at it and we want more time, we can certainly put this on the next agenda unless we wanna do it now.
Anyway, I don't think any significant change.
Alan, do you have any comments on this since you're really involved in this thing?
It's okay to me.
Does to me too.
Danny, are you gone?
No, I'm still here.
What are you, have you seen the tree policy?
Yep, I went over it with Bill. Yeah, I went over some of the things with Bill, he explained it and I think it'll be fine.
Okay. Well, I mean, if, if, if everybody seems to okay with it, there's no reason why we can't move forward unless there is some changes or some questions.
I move, we adopt it.
We adopt it.
Okay, so John made a motion to adopt the policy, do we have a second? Alan?
A second.
Alright, do we have any other discussion on the, um, proposed graft and tree policy? If not, all in favor of adopting the policy as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I guess I'll get all this to Bill and once, once Bill gets it all done, we, he'll notify everybody for signature. Um, I see on here the tree warden's job description, um.
Did, did we ever get that, or are we supposed to just talk about it?
I think we just talked about it, I'm not sure that we ever got one, so.
I asked Danny the other day, I thought maybe I missed something, I happened to see Danny, I asked him about that too.
No.
Sure about that.
So Alan, do you have any comment on that, or should we just postpone this to another time?
Well, hate to disappoint you, but I, I would like to see us advertise. I would like to see if there's somebody else in town that interested to be tree warden.
That's okay.
Um, we may not know what we have in town for talent until we, um, advertise and see what, what's out there.
Would you like to advertise in the Grafton News or the Shopper as well as the other paper, Shopper?
That would be fine, yeah, well, we could do the Shopper and the Grafton News, but I think getting some other people involved in the town would be good.
So we, we have, we really oughta have a job description first.
Yeah.
I agree. That, that's where I was going, yeah.
And we really haven't talked about it, have we? Or did I, did I miss it?
No, I think you're right Stan, we really haven't, so why don't we just put this on, why don't we postpone this to next, to the next meeting? And we come up with some kind of, uh, job description or something, or somebody could work on it.
Well, we can adopt this policy and then generate, have Bill generate a job description for our discussion at the next meeting, so we've making some progress at least.
We adopted the policy, right, the tree policy?
Correct, okay. I just wanna make sure that I wasn't thinking the job description somehow stopped us from accepting what we just did.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Two different, two different things.
Well, that's how I interpreted it, I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so why, why don't we work on a, a job description when Bill returns, maybe we can get some, some, um, other towns or something we can take a look at and, and put it off of the next agenda, is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
Yeah.
And we could decide at that time, I think we still have time, we could advertise if, in the Grafton News and the Shopper before the, before the, um, deadlines. Okay, Village Park, Alan, you wanna give us an update?
Um, yep, finished clearing all the trails, um, some of them haven't been done for a long time. Cleared all the trails, cut hazard trail, trees as I saw fit along the trail as we were working. Um, there, so that part, that part's done. Uh, cleared the potential site for the tree or for the, um, lean-to, that's done. The issues I see are the work to do, the, the, uh, parking lot, I think is gonna be more money than I anticipated. And the cutting of ash trees is going to generate less money than I anticipated. So, um, I think we have to make some decisions on expenses. On top of that, um, we have a problem with the, um, Japanese barberry. That would re, i- if we were to use, uh, a treatment on that, it would require a licensed applicator. We've asked, um, Longview Forestry to look at it and give us some idea what it might cost, so we could talk more knowledgeably about cost. Um, so we've got some work to do and some decisions to make yet.
Should we, can we meet up there sometime and just take a look at what you're talking about?
That, I would like that very much.
I was up there that day, I wanted to talk to you, but I could never find you.
Well, I just had to listen for the chainsaw.
Al, wait, oh, go ahead.
Are we allowed to meet in a group?
Can, can we just have, call it as a select board meeting?
Well, no, but I mean.
Just keep our distance?
Yeah, I mean, are we, is that permissible, I mean, fine with me, I just don't know the law that well.
Well.
Well, this is informational.
Over ten people, so that would definitely call the select board, and if there was a couple publics, we'd still be good, I think the number's up to twenty-five now, right?
Okay, so when would you like to do this, you wanna do this prior to, before our next select board meeting? Or, or pick a date, or when we can all do it, or, I don't know, maybe Alan, you wanna give some dates that we could all meet?
I would just do it as part of a select board meeting with, and.
Well, remember, we don't have a face-to-face, so we'd have to go to the meeting and then we'll all have to drive home again to go, this be on TV. It's not like before where we could have meeting and then drive up to the Town Garage or whatever, so.
Correct, but if we're still having our meeting at three o'clock, like, like we're doing today, we could set it up so we do our meeting at three o'clock and at five-thirty or whatever, we decide to go take a walk in the park.
That's fine. That means we all have to drive from their homes there, which is fine with me.
Yeah.
Alright, so why don't we put it on the agenda for next thing, to have a meeting, uh, after the select board meeting, is that alright?
Sure.
Al, can I ask, um, when you say that it's gonna cost a little more than you're anticipating, like, do you have a ballpark? I mean, what were you anticipating and what are you assuming, um, I'm just looking at the dollars.
Um, I, I was hoping, and, and I guess perhaps I was too optimistic or too naive, or maybe both, but I was hoping that there was enough timber volume that we could offer the timber, the ash to get it removed. Um, and the value of that would pay for the, um, parking area slash log landing. Um, if we are to do the work clearing the parking area and graveling it, I think our cost is gonna be somewhere between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars if you put twelve inches of gravel in it to, uh, to have a dry parking lot. We have about nine thousand dollars if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
That's, that's in our kitty, and the volume of timber doesn't make up the difference.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
I, I think we oughta, when we meet and look at that, then we'd have some idea what you're talking about.
Right.
I do too, I think, I think that's a good idea, and in fact, I was going to suggest that we go for a walk. Bring your, uh, Permethian sprayed pants because if we walk from the parking lot over to the trail area, we walked through a pretty good patch of that, um, Japanese barberry, which is, we should look at that because then people would understand the problem, um, but bring some tick repellent stuff with you.
Okay, anything else on the Village Park?
Uh, I have something, it's not the Village Park, but I have something under parks that we can either do that under other business if you want.
No, do it now Stan, it's okay.
Alright, the other thing is, is down by the, the Village Pump down there at the, the Wilson Park, there's that area that's in the middle and there's a new tree that's been planted that doesn't do very well. I talked to Ivor Stevens about that, apparently it's a low spot, it's exactly where the house was. So it's kind of a low spot, maybe not a lot of topsoil, so the water comes down from Pleasant Street, I guess, and goes right across and, and kind of floods that area. Uh, he was suggesting that that area, uh, be raised up with topsoil and replanted. Uh, with, with, I mean, reseeded with, with grass to try to just raise that up a little bit, shed the water off. Uh, he was saying it'd be about five hundred dollars to do that.
If.
So I just, I just wanted to bring that up.
If you raised it up, would that mean putting soil over the tree, the base of the tree? Who, who?
I, I would assume you'd have to replant that tree.
Well, that was, my question was, is it gonna dig up and replant the tree, how big is the tree you're talking about, Stan?
Inches maybe?
How much?
Two inch diameter maybe?
Oh, yeah, that's still a size you could replant, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it hasn't done very well at all since the time, I thought it was dying and I had him go down and look at it last year, and he said it looked okay, it just, it wasn't doing well, and it looks just as bad this year, it has some leaf on it. Um, it's easy to see if you ever drive by it, uh, I, I, it's just something we gotta consider, I don't think we have to make a decision, but he, he's just suggesting it'd be about with the labor to spread it, to buy the topsoil, uh, and do the work, it's about five hundred dollars.
Well, Stan, um, I believe, isn't that considered part of Wilson Memorial Park?
Yeah.
Okay, um, well, I, in the trustee of public funds accounts, there is a balance of twenty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine to maintain the park. Um, I can just check, um, I just have a notebook in front of me right now, but I can check and see and make sure what's tied up in an endowment, but we can also cover it with the funds from the trustee of public funds.
Yeah, I, I think it should be done, it just, it's, it's a really nice little area down there, the bench is right along the river, and this whole area is kind of gray, and that nice tree that they planted is not, I, I think it'd be worthwhile doing, but I certainly didn't wanna give them the go-ahead to do it. I wanted to bring it up at a, at a meeting so it can be discussed.
Well.
Whatever anybody wants to do.
For the next meeting, I'll get the final number as to what we can use, work with, without touching the endowment, and, um, maybe that'll kind of sway your decisions.
That'd be great.
One way or another.
Yeah, I, I talked to, I, I saw that tree last year.
Yeah.
And it's not doing well, and I, I think it'll never do well unless you fix it.
Right.
Personally.
Yeah, I think it's, must be getting road salt maybe on it, coming down Pleasant Street, right straight down and across the road, I'm not sure, but it's not.
What species of tree is it?
I don't know.
I, I'm not sure either.
But, um, but why don't we, we'll just, I'll have Bill put it on the agenda for next, for the next meeting.
I think that'd be good.
We should have our tree warden take a look at it.
There you go.
I appreciate.
Are we all done with the parks, the Village Park? Okay, the wastewater, um, treatment committee appointment, what's that about Stan, did we lose somebody?
Uh, yeah, Kim, uh, retired.
Oh.
I didn't.
Hi Suzanne.
Hi, hi.
I'm assuming the, the smiling face behind the wastewater treatment, uh, group here has a nominee.
So, hi everybody, I have, uh, Al, the opposite problem from Al, my hair is growing out uncontrollably, so I may be unrecognizable here. Um, I wanted to regrettably let you know that Kim has resigned from the Water Commission. We are very, very disappointed about this because she was such a valuable member in so many ways. Um, and yet it's totally understandable because the select board is just providing too much, and the school board is just providing way, way too much work for her. So anyway, Kim, I just wanted to say once again, uh, to the select board and to the people who are following this meeting, how much we appreciate all you did for, uh, for the Water Commission while you served.
Thank you Suzanne.
You're welcome.
It was very educational.
Yes, well, that was one of your suggestions actually, and, uh, and I'm, I'm glad we, uh, went down that path. So anyway, um, Kim has suggested that her replacement be Meg Gonzalez, and I just wanted to mention a word or two about Meg to you. Uh, she has, uh, faithfully attended our meetings as a member of the public, and she really integrated herself into our work when she participated in the water testing, uh, survey. And, um, Meg has a professional and, and personal interest in the environment and water specifically. So I think, uh, we would all, and I, and I, I canvassed the members of the commission and we would favor, um, a nominee, uh, uh, not, or nominating you or, uh, s- suggesting, uh, Meg to you for your approval. Having said that, I spoke with Meg to see if she would be interested, and she's very interested, but she has a personal concern, and without, uh, you know, talking too much about her private situation, as you know, um, Meg and Mariano are renting a home in Grafton, and they're not quite sure where they're gonna settle, uh, permanently. And they may make a decision in the next three to six months, and they'd rather stay in Grafton, but they just don't know whether the right property will come up for them in Grafton, shall I say. And so with that full disclosure, she wanted me to make sure that if she said yes, it would be alright for her to, um, you know, either have to resign if she's no longer a Grafton citizen, or if that doesn't matter to the select board, she would continue on. My recommendation is that none of us right now knows what the future holds, and therefore I would love for you to say it would be okay for Meg to serve as long as she possibly could. So with that, I'll throw it out to you and, and, and get your feedback. So with that, I'll throw it out to you and, and, and get your feedback, please.
Yeah, I'll, I'll agree. I, uh, you know, we, we, doing the water testing, uh, Meg was a, a great help on that. I know she has some sort of a background in the water situation, and she is very, very interested. Uh, I personally, uh, wasn't quite sure who might be interested, and I, I think, uh, she would be a great choice.
I agree.
Stan, do you have, does any, do any of the select board members, or Kim, do you have any concern about, um, this perhaps longer-term possibility that they might move out of Grafton? Or do you think we should just go ahead, or suggest to Meg that it's not a problem for us, specifically for the select board, if, if she makes this decision now and subsequently has to change her mind?
My opinion, I mean, things change anyway.
Exactly.
You know, you, 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 you do what you can for the, 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 the time that you have and, and the time that you can put in, and things are going to change, and you, you drop that ten and fund at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah, nobody, nobody really knows, Suzanne. I mean, she said that she might, she might not, so.
Right.
Uh, she's, she, if she's here, you, let's utilize her expertise for three, four, five, six, seven months that she's here, and if she stays, then that's great.
Yeah, right. So what do we need to do, Joe, formally? Does the select board need to, um, to go ahead and approve her? Or would you like for me to go back to her first with the opinion of the select board that it would be all right for her to serve even under the circumstance that she might move sometime in the next six months? And then bring that back to you and, and make the, a final approval after she's indicated she'll accept?
Well, how does everybody feel about that?
That's fine with me.
Fine with me.
I need to make a motion that we approve her to, uh, fill the vacancy created by Kim.
I'll, I'll second Alan.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? So let's call them a question, all in favor of, of having, uh, Meg, uh, fill Kim's spots, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so, welcome, Kim, to the wastewater committee.
May.
Okay.
Thank you Suzanne.
Thank you, thank you very much.
This swimming pool, if I remember correctly, we talked about this at budget, but nobody really, I don't remember we ever made a decision, and normally we open up the swimming pool on Memorial Day, which is long gone now. So the question is, do we want to open the pool or not? Uh, Rick is ready to test it, so we have to make a decision whether we're going to go with this thing for another year, or we're just going to close it.
Um, question. If, if we do not open it, are we still going to pay to have it mowed every, whenever it needs mowing? In, my, where I'm going with that is, if we don't open it, is the only thing we are saving the cost of the water test?
And the liability?
I don't, I don't think it's, I, I don't think it's so much the mowing, um, it's, it's whether or not we have a liability and the water and the way it looks, and all the other stuff that goes along with it.
Well, unless you fill it in, we still got a liability.
Not if you put up a sign that says, uh, not, not for swimming, whatever, yes, the li, but the, but the liability is, is less.
I don't know, I don't know. If, if you just have an open pond, I mean, there's open ponds everywhere that, you know, we either use or, I mean, there's a dry hydrant there that the fire department uses, it's just an open frog pond.
Same thing as fire pond.
What's that?
Just like the fire pond.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see where the, uh, that the town necessarily has, has the liability. The quality, or whatever, there's no diving board, there's no equipment there. We're not trying to pretend that it's a. Uh, you know, we were proud, the fire department was out there the other night and used it at the, the, for, for a drill. And that was so bad, uh, I think it's, it almost knocked, terrible. I, I just think we just have to add it as a pool and mow it as a park.
I, I know people do, um, they do picnic there, and I've seen people picnicking there and, and whatever. So it is kind of like a little nice spot to have a picnic, but we can, we can, we're hitting the swimming.
Now, improvement association used to put a, a porta potty out there, and they're not putting one out there this year.
Well, did we ever ask, did they, did they decline, or we just didn't ask them?
I'm not sure how that came about, to be perfectly.
Because usually the town tells them the pool is open, and they usually put the porta potty, and then when the pool is closed, they take it away. But I, I don't think anybody's ever told them whether the pool is open or closed.
Maybe they could just see the writing on the wall.
So the question is, what do you want to do with it? Do you want to just leave it there? Or do you want to open it up as a swimming pool? I mean, that's, that's the question.
It seems like if we are not going to open it, there should be some signage that says, swim at your own risk, pool not officially opened, or there's got to be some, something there to let people know it's, it's not an approved swimming site.
Just put up a sign, no swimming.
I was led, I was led to believe at one time, it wasn't a swim at your own risk, but there was a thing, this goes back some years ago, that if you put a sign that says either swim at your own risk, no lifeguard or anything, you're, you're automatically acknowledging the risk. You're not lessening the risk. Now, I don't know what that holds in a, in a court of law, but that's what I was told. Because the tavern swimming pool has never had any lifeguards or anything like that there, and that's very deep. And I suggested that sign there, and I was told that it actually heightens your liability by acknowledging the risk.
Why, why don't we, uh, contact Larry Slayson, tell him what we want to do and ask for his advice?
Yes.
Okay, so how about if we do this then? How about if we tell Rich, don't test the water, and we'll make a decision after, at our next select board meeting?
Let's not do anything until we get some sort of legal opinion about it.
Right.
I would also contact VLCT's passive.
Okay.
And find out what their, um, legal stance is too for liability.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, I just don't think there ought to be a pool there for you. A pool. It can be a frog pond or something like that.
Yeah, it's a fire pond, that's what it is.
Fire pond, right.
Okay, so are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe, um, that, maybe putting a sign up that calls it whatever we're going to call it, that, that sort of shows that it's not a swimming pool, it's just a park.
So why don't we just wait to see what happens with Larry Slayson and then, and then make that decision? If we put it aside, it might do something that we don't want to happen, I don't know.
I have, I have a question on town, on the liability of town property that we have. Do we just assume that all town property, the parks, have liability? Because there was a question about the cemetery having liability with their vehicles. Something that you should check out?
I think Bill was checking out on that stuff already. I think, did an email go out to him and he was checking on it through VLCT's passive and the act about the cemeteries having liability?
Right. Well, my question is, if we have town properties, being the village parks, are they under our liability?
The, like, the village park and things are.
And what about the pool?
The pool, the, the pool is under liability, yes. We have it listed as a swimming pool. The Kidder Hill Bridge, um, yeah, various ones. Cemetery's not so much, because they, for some reason, they don't have them listed. And I don't know what transpired out of that conversation that Bill had with Vicky Abear from passive.
Yeah, none of the cemeteries are even listed as a town asset.
But, but Kim, if a person goes to the village park and gets hurt, there's a, there's an issue that the town has. If they go to the cemetery and they get hurt, don't they have the same issue?
Yeah, should. That's why we're looking into it, or Bill's looking into it.
Yeah, but shouldn't at least the, the, the properties of the library be listed as a town asset? They're not even listed as an asset of the town.
I know, I know. That's what Bill's researching.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so we'll, we'll have to wait to see. Let's revisit this, um, at the next meeting when Bill returns.
Well, I, I still would like to have it included in the discussion with Larry Slayson.
Yes.
About, well, li- li- hear me out. If, if you, if you work, um, in the woods as a logger and you are cutting trees, you're in a higher risk category than somebody that is sitting in a machine cutting trees. My, my feeling is, if you have a name for that piece of property that is something other than town pool, you're not, you're, you're at least implying that the purpose of that property is not a swimming pool. And it may put us in a different, uh, cost or a lot, a different status as far as liability. So having that discussion with Larry Slayson might be helpful.
Well, I couldn't agree more, and I think we should do that.
Right. But I mean, with the idea of, can we call it something that, that shows people it's not intended to be used as a pool?
Right. Okay, Stan, did you have, do you have, someone have other business?
Uh, um.
Your business was an executive session?
That was the Wilson Park.
Okay.
That was the $500 for Wilson Park.
Is there any other business? Do we have any public comment?
Joe?
Yes?
Under other business, I know you had a conversation with me earlier today.
I was going to do that on the executive session, but do you want to do that openly? That's fine with me.
Um, it's totally up to you. I didn't know. I just wanted to make sure. It doesn't say what executive, and you didn't state what executive, so I didn't know what executive session was.
Alan, um, do you want to, do you want to talk about the, uh, Bill's, um, return in executive session? Or do you want to do that as a personnel matter outside?
Let's talk about it in, as a personnel item in executive session.
Okay. That's what I was going to do, but.
Yep.
You know, Kim raised the question, so I think, I think.
I wasn't sure.
Be done that way.
No, get down, stop.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, so if there's no other, if there's no public comment, no other business, um, we need to have a motion to, um, go into executive session for personnel and contracts.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Who do you want to go into your executive session?
Um, well, Kim, you need to be in, I know that, uh, and I don't know, Wendy's taking notes, so I think she, does she go in?
That's what I was going to ask you. I was going to ask you if you wanted me to or not. It's up to you, obviously.
Well, somebody has to take a, a note, I think.
Yeah, when we come out for action.
After.
Right, so.
Usually isn't any notes taken during, only the decisions, if any, are made after.
Okay, so then we'll just let, let Wendy know that what, what we did, so she added to the minutes, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
That's, that's how I would do it, yeah.
Okay, all right, that's fine.